Come on, sort of pop, let's go.
Okay, we'll move into our first presentation, our only presentation, the indoor Aquatics Center Project Update, and I believe the mayor is going to kick us off. Welcome, Mayor.
Well, councilors and citizens of Sioux Falls, we are just chomping at the bit to have this discussion with you and to relay this presentation with you today. In my four and a half years as your mayor, I can't remember a presentation that we've put this much time and effort into, just to tell you all the good things that have been going on since our groundbreaking for our new indoor aquatics facility. And with that in mind, let's just kick it off. By first, my intent was just to kind of give you a little flavor for the project goals in terms of getting this indoor aquatic facility built. First of all, of course, we want it to be a top-notch patron experience for everybody, and we believe that after what you see today, we're going to do that and more. We're certainly going to engage the community in the process. This is just part of it, and we will keep you up to date along this journey, just like we did with the events center. This is a multi-purpose facility, and what you're going to hear about today are some of those ways that indeed it will be a multi-purpose facility. It is accessible to all. I know that during some of the discussion, during some of the debate, you know, there was this feeling that, oh, just certain special interest groups are going to benefit from this facility. That couldn't be much farther from reality or much farther from the truth. Young or old, rich or poor, black or white, no matter where you live, in fact, even if you don't live in the city of Sioux Falls, I think you're going to find that this indoor aquatics facility is going to benefit all. We want to pay for this with cash. That is something that we just have been intent on doing, and we're still intent on doing, and council, we hope that you support us in that effort today. As well as Spellerburg Park, that was a big part of the discussion and still needs to be a big part of that discussion. We want to make sure that not only do we serve all of Sioux Falls, but we want the Spellerburg Park neighbors, that neighborhood cheering for us along the way as well. And then, just like we learned with the events center, there are virtues, there are benefits to securing private support as we build these public facilities as well, and we'll tell you more about that. Counselor Karski, councilors, I hope you enjoy the presentation.
Good afternoon, city council members. Don Kearney with Parks and Recreation. As we began to launch this project, we've learned much from some due diligence that we've encountered upon, and as part of that due diligence, we performed site visits to aquatic centers that were similar in size to our planned facility here in Sioux Falls. Those cities included Edmond, Oklahoma, and Lawrence, Kansas, and the University of Iowa. What was nice about visiting these three indoor aquatic centers with our design team was that they were all three constructed at different times. One was recently opened, one had been open about three to four years, and one had been open for about 15 years, so we could see the different spectrum of the ages of those particular facilities. What we learned by talking to those different, what we learned in talking to those different user groups and facility operators was that you need to make sure that you size the recreational pool to meet your community's needs. Some of the facility operators that we talked to said in hindsight, we wished we'd have built that facility a little bit bigger. Doesn't quite meet the demand that we have. We also found that quality material selection is vital. For example, some facilities were dealing with significant rust issues because of the high humidity environments, and so it's critical that we pay attention to that. And we also learned that the multi-purpose rooms at these other facilities were heavily used. Part of our due diligence also included adding pool and building experts to our design team. I would tell you that they've been instrumental in providing industry standards on pool sizes and depths for our proposed uses, and they've also helped us to really maximize the usage and the square footage to make sure absolutely no space is wasted within this facility. One example of this is that our water slide is not completely enclosed within the building. As you will see on the upcoming slides, only the entry and exit portions of our water slide is actually inside the building. This eliminates the need to build that additional square footage, and that means we also don't have to heat and cool the space for the life of that building. Another example of no wasted space is that the raised seating areas in the 50-meter pool area are located on the exterior of the building to, excuse me, the 50-meter pool area, the additional space underneath that raised seating area are areas that we're going to be using for multi-purpose and storage. And then, the other thing that we're doing is that we're using the waste, excuse me, I'm off track here. Another example of no wasted space is that the mechanical systems that will be associated with this pool, we're putting on the exterior of the building instead of the interior building, again, to reduce the amount of square footage. These pool and building experts of the building instead of the interior building, again, to reduce the amount of square footage. These pool and building experts are also providing guidance on the specialized mechanical, electrical, and plumbing requirements, and as you can probably imagine, in high humidity environments like an indoor aquatic center, we need to be carefully selecting these systems to ensure the comfort of those using that building. We've also used a construction manager and owner's representative, which has been a sound investment on a project of this scope. They are providing value engineering on literally every aspect of this project. They're also providing a number of other centers that were similar in size to our planned facility here in Sioux Falls. Those cities included Edmond, Oklahoma, and Lawrence, Kansas, and the University of Iowa. What was nice about visiting these three indoor aquatic centers with our design team was that they were all three constructed at different times. One was recently opened, one had been open about three to four years, and one had been open for about 15 years, so we could see the different spectrum of the ages of those particular facilities. What we learned by talking to those different, what we learned in talking to those different user groups and facility operators was that you need to make sure that you size the recreational pool to meet your community's needs. Some of the facility operators that we talked to said in hindsight, we wished we'd have built that facility a little bit bigger. Doesn't quite meet the demand that we have. We also found that quality material selection is vital. For example, some facilities were dealing with significant rust issues because of the high humidity environments, and so it's critical that we pay attention to that. And we also learned that the multi-purpose rooms at these other facilities were heavily used. Part of our due diligence also included adding pool and building experts to our design team. I would tell you that they've been instrumental in providing industry standards on pool sizes and depths for our proposed uses, and they've also helped us to really maximize the usage and the square footage to make sure absolutely no space is wasted within this facility. One example of this is that our water slide is not completely enclosed within the building. As you will see on the upcoming slides, only the entry and exit portions of our water slide is actually inside the building. This eliminates the need to build that additional square footage, and that means we also don't have to heat and cool the space for the life of that building. Another example of no wasted space is that the raised seating areas in the 50-meter pool area are located on the exterior of the building to, excuse me, the 50-meter pool area, the additional space underneath that raised seating area are areas that we're going to be using for multi-purpose and storage. And then, the other thing that we're doing is that we're using the waste, excuse me, I'm off track here. Another example of no wasted space is that the mechanical systems that will be associated with this pool, we're putting on the exterior of the building instead of the interior building, again, to reduce the amount of square footage. These pool and building experts are also providing guidance on the specialized mechanical, electrical, and plumbing requirements, and as you can probably imagine, in high humidity environments like an indoor aquatic center, we need to be carefully selecting these systems to ensure the comfort of those using that building. We've also used a construction manager and an owner's representative, which has been a sound investment on a project of this scope. They are providing value engineering on literally every aspect of this project. They're also providing updated cost estimates and construction inflation projections. We'd now like to walk you through the proposed features of the new indoor aquatic center. The pictures on these slides are just representative pictures of the features we're about to discuss, and please realize that the images are for illustration purposes only, and the final product will more than likely vary from what you see tonight, but it's, again, for illustration purposes. The picture in the middle is an example of a zero-depth pool. It's similar to a beach entry with a depth that starts at zero and gets deeper as you wade out into that pool. This is a great amenity for families and especially those with young children. The picture on the left is a current channel. Current channel is very popular for all ages. The teens love it, and it does wonders for the water walkers with orthopedic therapy needs. The recreational pool will have three lap lanes and a large play feature to keep the kids of all ages entertained, and it will also feature a water slide and a lily pad crossing feature, which challenges users to make it to the other side. This image reflects the overall floor plan for the recreational pool and shows where the amenities we just reviewed are located within this pool. If you remember in the earlier slide when we talked about due diligence we performed, this is one of the spaces that we felt like it needed to be larger than what was originally shown in the toolbox option as part of the aquatic facility master plan. We expect that this space is going to be heavily used, and we wanted to make sure we did it right the first time. Now on to the salute to the veterans' therapy pool. This facility would have a step and ramp entry along with a lift. It too will be multi-purpose by offering warm water therapy, swimming lessons, and general recreational swimming. We will also be able to regulate the temperature of the water separately from the other pools. Here's an overall view of the therapy pool that will serve veterans, seniors, and all with therapy needs. This image is the 50-meter pool. The dimensions will be 50 meters by 25 yards in width. One of the comments we heard over and over again in our aquatic facility master planning process, all the, all the community users that we saw out there, the facility providers that already have lap lanes, they all said, "We need more lap lanes. They're already full. I can't get lap time." And so, with this configuration, we would be able to have 10 50-meter lanes or 20 25-yard lanes. It will also have four diving boards with two 1-meter boards and with two 3-meter boards. As you will see in this image, there are also two movable bulkheads that will allow us to divide the pool into one, two, or three bodies of water. And then finally, you'll see in the foreground, the elevated seating for 500. This slide illustrates how the 50-meter pool will provide great flexibility for programming purposes. In this configuration, you could have diving on one end, lap swimming in the middle, and open swim or even water aerobics on the far end, all at the same time. So you can see the number of simultaneous uses are many. In addition to the pools that we just reviewed, there are also other public spaces. There will be two multi-purpose rooms that can be used individually, or they can be opened up, so you have one larger room that can be used at the same time. This would be ideal for water safety and lifeguard training classes, and would also be available for community meetings, birthday parties, and special events. The front entry and main corridor into the building will offer restrooms, locker rooms, concessions, and a lounge area to not only support the users of the aquatic facility, but also for those using the sledding hill. This image shows all the many, how all the many come together on the main level. You will note that we do plan to design this facility for a spray ground or a splash pad. However, we want you to know that we'll be bidding it as an ad alternate. Our new indoor aquatic center will be flexible, it will be durable, it will be built for the future capacity of our community, and it will have high-quality materials and equipment, and it will have a sound economic impact. Let's talk about flexibility of this facility. This facility will provide opportunities for the entire family: recreational and lap swimming, swimming lessons, therapy, fitness, water safety training, water slides, play features, diving, and more. It will also have three to five bodies that can be used all at the same time due to the flexibility we talked about with the movable bulkheads, and yes, it will be open year round. As it relates to durability and quality, as we mentioned before in our earlier slides, materials and system selections is critical. Here are a few things that we are looking at as we go about designing this facility. As I mentioned earlier, rust-resistant materials are a must, so we're looking at aluminum and fiberglass and those things that don't rust because of the high humidity environments. We are also focusing on lifecycle costs in our mechanical systems. One good example is our filter system. While one system may cost less upfront because there are options for different systems, the payback on a more expensive system may be the best value due to the operational efficiencies that we can achieve with that more expensive system, so the payback is there. LED lighting is also being used to keep utility costs as low as possible, and again, our emphasis has been to think long-term to minimize maintenance, repairs, and operational costs. Each unique space will also have separate mechanical systems, and as the mayor mentioned earlier, one of our goals for this facility is to be LEED certified. We think the equipment, materials, and finishes should be reflective of the strength of our people and our city, and our community will be proud of the finished product, just like our events center. The capacity, the capacity of this facility is a very important consideration. We will not make the same mistakes others have made by building it too small. We are a growing city, and demand will be high. Other area indoor facilities offer limited public access, and this facility will serve future generations. The economic impact of this facility will be significant. The facility will draw use from the metropolitan area and beyond. Special events will generate millions. It's a great investment in a core neighborhood. Area retail will receive a big economic boom, and again, it's another reason to live, work, and play in Sioux Falls. So with that, now I'd like to turn it over to Tracy Turbach to talk about funding. Tracy?
Thank you, Don. Good afternoon. Last time we were before the council to talk about this project was back in September. That was when the council was asked to approve the contract with TSP as the project architect and the contract with Sioux Falls Construction as the construction manager for the project. And as you can see from Don's segment of the presentation, there's a lot of hard work that's taken place since that time. Don talked about the due diligence and the site visits, among other parts of the due diligence effort. The schematic design process that's taken place has involved really a tremendous number of hours by the project team to bring us to this point, and Don has really done a nice job of providing an overview of that due diligence effort and the results of that schematic design process by describing what's in the facility. And if you noticed on the title slide of the presentation, the words "building it right the first time" were part of the title. That is really so important on this project. It's just so critical. We only get one crack at this. There is no do-over when you're building a facility like this or a project like this of this magnitude, and we all want and expect this facility to meet the community's needs, not only today, but for many, many years, in fact, decades into the future. The project team is very confident that the results of that due diligence process and the schematic design process that we've been through over the last several months, that you've heard described here today, will deliver on that critical, important point of building it right the first time. Based upon the due diligence work that's been completed and upon that schematic design process, the building, building it right the first time, this aquatic center will require an investment of $23.7 million, and I'd like to walk you through those numbers. As you'll recall, the council previously budgeted or allocated $19.8 million for this project, so achieving the goal of building it right the first time will require an additional investment of $3.9 million. And on the slide, you can see this is how we propose to fund that additional investment. Capital dollars are currently available, $1.6 million that resulted from surplus sales tax, second penny sales tax revenues. In other words, for 2014, sales tax revenues came in higher than what was anticipated, and so those dollars are in our capital fund and are not currently identified or obligated for any other project. In addition, there's $1.2 million that's currently available. That's, those are dollars that were remaining from projects that were completed in 2014 that came in under budget or were completed under budget. The city received, in addition to that, a half a million dollar gift from the Bradfeld family estate, and that gift was restricted for recreational parks, recreational facilities, so we're proposing to utilize those dollars for this project as well. And those first three bullet items, those first three amounts are dollars that are available today in our capital fund. The remaining $600,000 we're proposing to fund by reprioritizing other projects within the Parks Capital Improvement Plan in 2015 and 2016. Now, it's important to understand that we're not proposing that any Parks projects would be eliminated. We have identified some projects, lower priority projects, that would be moved back by a year or two in order to come up with that $600,000 for the aquatic center project. So those four items, four sources, add up to $3.9 million, and that will get us to the total investment of $23.7 million to do this project right the first time. We'll be back before the council next month with a supplemental appropriation ordinance to add $3.3 million to the budget for this project. That represents the total of those three, first three bullet points there, the surplus revenues from 2014, the savings that we've achieved on other projects, and the Bradfeld estate gift. The remaining $600,000, as I mentioned, would come from the reprioritization of the 15 and 16 Parks projects. There's about half of that that we've identified within the 15 plan that would be transferred to this project, and the other half of about $300,000 would be presented to the council when the 2016 capital plan is presented to you later this year. So that's how we would intend to, to achieve that full investment. So what are some of the reasons behind the additional investment to build it right the first time? As I've been saying, it really boils down to these four bullet points. The primary reasons include the additional space that Don talked about within the aquatic center allocated to provide more water surface area, and that's really a direct result of that due diligence process, learning from the mistakes of others. I don't think any of us want to be associated with a project that is undersized on the day it opens, and so that's just critical, and the increased capacity in the recreational pool is certainly a direct result of that. The therapy pool was not part of the original toolbox concept that Don talked about, so that is additional water surface space that's been added to the project. Also, in the due diligence, one of the things that we learned, Don talked on a number of points about the types and quality of materials and equipment that go into a facility like this. We believe it's very prudent to pay a little more to get that greater value and a longer life out of the facility when we're making this kind of an investment. So that's also contributing to that additional investment. And last, the construction costs are going up. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. They will continue to go up. They're increasing at a rate far faster than what we might see in the paper as an inflation rate for consumers. Construction is very, very active here in Sioux Falls, and so those costs will continue to escalate at a rapid pace. This is truly a case where time is money. If we delay the project any further, of course, the construction will most certainly continue to increase. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Kendra, and she will walk us through some of the next steps in the process. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Kendra Simmons-Mah, Chief Project Manager. I get the privilege to lead another project. That's an important initiative for the city of Sioux Falls, so I'm happy to be in front of you all and happy to make this project continue to move forward. So really, what I'm going to just talk about just briefly on this slide is really what's happening now. What's the next things that we're planning? And as Tracy mentioned, we'd like to come back to the council here in February to do a capital surplus supplemental ordinance, and so that's really the very next thing that we need to do. And then, design is in progress. I think Don did a good job going through where we're at today with schematic design, and we're continuing to move forward with design, and we expect with our partners with TSP and Councilman Hansager to be through design by the end of March. We are committed to community stakeholder involvement, not only with a citizen committee group, but also coming to you on a regular basis, so we do intend to come back on a quarterly basis, and so you can see that we'll be back in April, and then again in July, October, and then just so on and so forth as the year progresses. And then, we also will begin pool construction this spring. As the frost comes out of the ground, we anticipate with Sioux Falls Construction that they will be moving dirt in April, so we're really excited about that milestone. And then, another big construction milestone would be by the end of this year, 2015, the building will be enclosed, and that's really important to help save on winterization construction costs. We're still on track to have the building open for the public to use in fall of 2016. So with that, I just want to bring the mayor up to close the presentation, and we can answer your questions then.
Counselors, again, thank you so much for your time today. We truly appreciate it. This is certainly a topic we could have spent hours talking about today, and it is just, again, another step towards educating not only you, but also the public about making this investment and finally making this a reality for this town. Things to remember as we move forward. Again, the people of this town have spoken loud and clear. This is something that they've wanted a long time, and now we have the ability and the opportunity to actually make it happen. The due diligence is a very, very important part of the process. If you can figure out what others have done and not done correctly, you certainly don't want to do those same things in your town, and that's something that we certainly don't want to do, is make those same mistakes that others have made. We've talked about that today. Goodness gracious, if we would have built this indoor aquatic facility a year ago or two years ago, the odds are good, we would have saved hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars. Looking back is easy. Looking forward is the tough part. Making that investment now is the prudent thing to do, and that is exactly what we're recommending. We could have easily not done something like a, like a therapy pool. But again, whether you're a veteran, or if you're a senior, or if you're someone with special therapy needs, as we said, this is a pool for everybody, and this investment in a therapy pool, even if it wasn't part of the original discussion, it needs to be part of the discussion now. The town is booming, as you know, council. We've got another press conference coming up, and I'll give you a little scoop. There are people moving into our town, and they're going to keep moving into our town because of the quality of life investments that we're, that we're making, and this is just another one. But with that growing economy and population, again, we want to make sure that we do this right the first time. Investing in it to make sure that it's the right size is important. Of course, you're confident, I'm confident, the city's confident. We're going to do this right, all the while, living within our means. The proposal that we've submitted to you today does not add more debt. We're able to do it with cash or with prioritizing some events within our Parks Department, and ultimately, getting stuff done for the people that we serve. We are looking forward to coming back to you again, and... We are looking forward to coming back to you again in April or earlier, of course, but for now, we definitely want to open up for any questions that you have on any topic. Councilor Chair Karski, again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor, and to all those that presented a lot of information, and I'm sure we got more than one or two questions. Counselor Staggers.
Yes, I was wondering, when were the visits to Edmond, Oklahoma, Lawrence, Kansas, and Iowa City? When did they take place?
I believe those were in September that we toured those facilities.
Okay, I guess my question is, we're talking about, we want to get these things right, and as a result of those visits, it's apparent that you came to the conclusion, we have to have a larger facility. Is that kind of fair to say?
I think the takeaway was that make sure that you size your facility to the demand that you expect for that facility.
I guess my question is, before we had the vote in April on this facility, why didn't we do more diligence so that the people of Sioux Falls would have had a better idea of how much this was going to cost? Because this is quite an increase from what they were told during the election. I believe during the election, they were told around nineteen point five million. Now we're up to twenty three point seven million, and three point nine million is a rather large increase. How do we know we're not going to have another increase?
Well, I would just step back and share with you that both of the cost estimates for the indoor and the outdoor options that were discussed during our educational presentations, they came out of the aquatic facility toolbox options and the aquatic facility master plan. And so the resources through Councilman Hunsacker and Associates and their master planning efforts and their pool experience is really what drove those cost estimates based on those individual toolbox options. And for example, in the case of the seven point five million dollars for the outdoor facility, that too was used from that aquatic facility master plan. And so from our perspective, at least we're using the same document to determine the estimates.
But once again, the citizens were told one number, and now we have a dramatically increased number. How about the subsidy? We were told, given some numbers on the subsidy for the facility each year. I didn't see any numbers here. What's the subsidy going to be if it's going to be a larger facility?
Yeah, the original aquatic facility master plan on the large indoor aquatic center toolbox option identified six hundred ninety-two thousand dollar annual subsidy.
Beginning, I think it was.
Yeah, that is the projection that was made as part of our quarterly updates to the city council and part of our budget process for two thousand sixteen. We will be working on those operational costs and revenue projections, so we'll be able to provide more information on that at a later time.
So do you know just about when we might learn some more about the subsidy thing?
Well, typically in June, I believe, is when the city council likes to see revenue projections for two thousand sixteen, and so we're working towards that goal.
Counselor Staggers, I'm going to take questions from other counselors. We'll get back. Counselor Urbanbuck.
Thank you. Thank you, Don and Mayor and team. I appreciate your work. Couple of things. Talk first of all about the therapy pool. It wasn't part of the conversation prior to the election, but it did come out of conversations that happened during the election and after, in terms of the community's desire to be involved with patients and clients of the VA next door. Can you talk about why we're adding that and what's... It's a significant expense. Can you talk about that, Don?
Yeah, it really is something that we heard during our aquatic focus group meetings that we held as part of our master planning process. You know, obviously, the adjacency to the Veterans Hospital, we think is a nice connection. And where can you go in this community if you have arthritis, or if you have a bad hip, or if you need some physical therapy that needs water therapy in a raised temperature setting? Where can you do that if you're not a member of a private health club? And so to be able to have that available to the general public, we felt was really valuable.
Two other questions, actually, if I might. One, talk about that idea of better equipment and better materials. One of the things that threw me is an early slide where you put in, highlight the idea of rust resistant material. Talk about why that's important and where did that idea come from? I mean, it's a pool where there's lots of water. Why would we not do that?
Yeah, you know, I would tell you that we, especially on that facility that was fifteen years old, we were shocked at the amount of rust that that facility has undergone. And obviously, we have the benefit of hindsight. They built their building, and then we got to learn from it. But in that case, there was significant rust throughout their mechanical room, for example. It was significant. We even saw at a pool that just opened, their stainless steel was already rusting, and it just opened. And so it was very clear to us that that's a very important thing that you have to consider as you design these facilities.
That seems like one of those duh things to me, but I'll kind of let that go. My third and final question, then, is, this is new information for me, and when I'm looking at the spreadsheet that Tracy presented to us, talk about the Bradfeld gift. I mean, this seems like just the beginning, possibly, of more private partnerships, but what, who is that family, and where did that come from, and what's that about?
Yeah, about, I would say it's about eighteen months ago, the city received a gift from the Loretta Bradfeld Estate, and there were several beneficiaries to that estate, and we happened to be one of them. And there was five hundred thousand dollars that was unrestricted that was to be targeted, and we received for Parks and Recreation. And so we've been in contact with that family and talked to them about using their gift for this particular project, and they're excited about it, and we also want to take an opportunity to work closely with them to recognize the Loretta Bradfeld family for their contribution.
Very cool. Thank you.
Counselor Rolfing.
Yes. Don, come on here, there. Don, speak to me about the, or tell me a little bit more about LEED certified. That seems to be a real, that would really be tough, a LEED certified indoor swimming facility, and what level of LEED certification are we shooting for?
You know, that's probably a better question for TSP architect. Sean Irvin is the LEED architect through TSP, and he's probably better qualified to answer that. Sean?
Hi, Sean Irvin with TSP. Counselors, thank you for the question, Rex. It's for LEED certified, which is the base level LEED certification, and that was identified as a level that would be appropriate for proper sustainability and meeting with some of the other cities' goals, to try and be sustainable about building these facilities, things like that. So we're going for that base amount, and it looks like we're in pretty good shape to be able to hit that at our early projections.
Super.
Thanks for the question.
Counselor Staggers.
Yes, can you tell us how much that becoming LEED certified is going to cost approximately? And what level are we going to be LEED certified? I know there are different levels.
A LEED certified is the minimal level.
Okay.
And then the next level above that is LEED silver, and then gold and platinum, and there's other levels. LEED certified is the base level.
Okay.
As far as specific cost for LEED, there's a lot of things that we do during design that are specifically sustainably driven, because that's in the best interest of the city, to build things that last for a long time, that have good lifecycle costs, and those kind of analyses, which we would do whether it was LEED or not. So it's a little hard to actually identify, what is the price tag to put that LEED plaque in the lobby? But because it is such a priority for the city to be sustainable about the way they do things, it seemed like the appropriate thing to do, and that price tag, as I said, is very difficult to identify an exact dollar amount.
Would it be five hundred thousand maybe, or a million, or?
Can't really identify that specifically, because you're comparing a LEED certified project with potentially one that is a baseline project that has no consideration for long-term lifecycle cost analyses, which typically you would not want to do on a building. You want to make sure that the lifecycle cost makes sense. The city's going to have this building for a lot of years, and we want to make sure that it's a good investment forty years down the road as it was the day you built it. So that's why we build a lot of those things in, whether it's LEED or not. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but also, it would have been important to really know how much additional that's going to cost. I mean, when you build something, you know, you want to have as many numbers as possible, and it would have been nice to have had a rough number. I know it's, I know it's very difficult from what you're saying.
Right.
It's difficult, I know that, but there is additional cost.
Yep, there is some cost, but in this case, it makes sense because of the city's priorities to be sustainable in their approach. Okay?
Don, did you have something to add to that?
What's that?
Yeah, the thing that I would add to your question, Councilmember Staggers, about, you know, will there be additional dollars requested above and beyond what we're already requesting? And I would tell you that we feel very confident in that twenty-three point seven million dollar number. The reason for our confidence is that we've gotten to that schematic design level of design. And the other thing you should be aware of is that we also have the construction manager's contingency in there, as well as the project contingency. And so we're very confident in those numbers, and we do not plan to be back here for any additional quest for funding.
I guess if I could just say one quick thing, Don. You know, when the event center was built, before the vote took place, we told the public one hundred and fifteen million dollars, and we're trying to stay to that one hundred and fifteen million. Here, we said nineteen point five, and now we're up to twenty-three point seven. So if we could do it for the event center, have a pretty good number for the event center, why didn't we have a better number for the pool?
Yep, Counselor Staggers, that's a really good question and a point I'd like to clarify for everyone. If you remember, when we did the event center, we hired Stink Holmes-Deathless and Morton St. Construction to give us the number before the vote, and we did not do that in this project. So that's the big difference. They gave us, Stink Holmes-Deathless and Morton St. Construction gave us a schematic design number before the vote for the event center. That was not the way the project, this project worked. So that's the difference.
That's a significant difference for the public.
Counselor Kylie.
Thank you.
That's the difference.
That's a significant difference for the public.
Counselor Kylie. Thank you. I really do like the concept of doing it right. That's how I personally like to try to take on projects myself, especially my home projects. And doing it right involves the development or the inclusion of a therapy pool, which I think can benefit countless numbers of citizens, including our returning vets, our aging vets. And we have a rather high population of individuals in the city with special needs due to the fact that Sioux Falls is, by South Dakota standards, a medical Mecca. And so these individuals, including my sister, could have greatly benefited from the therapy pool. So I like the concept of doing it right, and again, including the increased capacity on the quality of materials, and I think that's where the LEED certification plays a very important role. We could, we could build it to minimum standards. We could even save more money by building it substandard, but in the long run, you're going to pay for that because you haven't made that initial investment. So I think hopefully, with the LEED certification, the savings will be seen actually in the Furthermore, I like the concept of using our surplus funds and savings that we have available to us, and especially appreciate the gift from the Bradfeld family. That is just wonderful, and hopefully, we can develop more public-private relationships such as that throughout this project as we continue forward. With that said, I guess I would like to just, we've had a look at the facility, we haven't looked outside the facility, and I would just like to place an emphasis on the parking for the facility, that we can do all we possibly can to maximize onsite parking so that we can reduce issues with traffic or traffic pedestrian-related issues, and also minimize some of the neighbors' concerns that they had as well, too.
Counselor Anderson.
Tracy, during our last budget cycle, when we were making some amendments in that, you advised and warned the council about using surplus funds and that some of the consequences that could happen as far as going under that twenty-five percent. Am I correct in my statement there?
We talked about that at Budget Time. That, of course, is the general fund reserve. We're talking about here the capital fund, which does not ordinarily carry a twenty-five percent reserve. We don't carry any, any amount of targeted reserve within the capital fund. So the concern that I expressed at Budget Time was really related to the general fund, where we do maintain, try to maintain at least a twenty-five percent reserve. That's right.
And then, about every time this year, we talk about those surplus funds and everything. I guess I'm just sort of disappointed that before we even knew what surplus funds were available, we're getting this, and there's no discussion about what options that could have been done with these funds. And over the last two years now, if we do approve this, you know, we're talking, instead of nineteen point eight million, we're talking twenty-one point six million. So I guess I'm just a little concerned on, you know, how we're moving money around and doing... It's not that I'm against this. I'm just concerned about how we're putting money out front here and saying publicly, this is what we want to do with it, before the councils even had a choice or any options to discuss. So that's, that's just something I wanted to bring up.
And I guess my response to that would be, we've, we've been on the track of doing this project, not only doing it right, as we've been talking about, but also doing it as prudently as we can, and we've got the opportunity to do this project without borrowing money for it. And I think the proposal that you've seen here today is just consistent with that, that goal that we've had for some time now of doing this project without having to sell bonds to finance it. I just think that's, that's a very prudent thing to do. Could those dollars go to other things? Certainly, I guess that's true of any dollars that we spend and that you folks appropriate year in and year out. But this is obviously a very high priority project for the community. It has very broad support in the community. We saw that when the outdoor pool was voted on, that we don't want another outdoor pool. We want to go with an indoor facility. I think people are very excited about it, and I think the financial plan that we've put together here, again, is just a very, very prudent thing to do for the community. We clearly have the dollars to do it, and I certainly hope that you will support that when we bring it to you next month.
No, I guess just to reply to that, doing it right, I agree with, but doing it right also means communicating with the council on these changes before you bring it public.
Counselor Anderson Jr., our job, as we're representing the people of this town, is we're going to communicate as best we can, we're going to do our due diligence, and we're going to make recommendations on how to move this city forward. That's what we're doing here today. We're doing that, and we're having dialogue. It sounds like we're even having a little debate. That's what's appropriate. That's how government works in Sioux Falls. That's how we find common ground, make some compromise, and actually get things done. Counselor Anderson Jr., if you've got a better plan, and there are certainly different alternatives out there, we could certainly build it cheaper, like Counselor Stagger sounds like you would like to do. Counselor Anderson Jr., it sounds like you may want to utilize some of those excess capital dollars to maybe tackle some other needs in this town. You can certainly do that as well, and as a team, we can. This is the recommended plan that we're recommending today. And, and the one thing that I think I'd love to just share with you, Counselor Anderson Jr., is that even when you look back at all the incredible work that not only the city team did with the last budget, but also, not to minimize in any way, the incredible amount of work that you did as a council with that recommended budget, we're going to get all that done. We are. Everything's going to get done, except we may have to move back a couple of lower priority projects about a year in our Parks Department. Other than that, we're going to realize a dream that we've been talking about for generations. We're going to move this city forward. We're going to invest in quality of life. We're going to move this city forward, we're going to invest in quality of life, we're going to create economic development, and we're going to find ways to work together to make this community better. So, Councillor Anderson Jr., this isn't the end of the dialogue, this is just another step in the dialogue, and we look forward to working with you to ultimately, you know, make something good happen for this town.
May I reply?
Yes, Councillor, please.
Mayor, number one, I didn't say I was against this plan, I didn't say I had another plan, okay? I just, because this has been just given to us, there's questions that have to have, have to be done here. We're not a rubber stamp group, and I want to make sure that when we ask the questions, and I, like I said, I brought up my concerns about the communication on this, especially that large of a change. You know, I just thought that it would have been better if it would have been communicated to the council before this was done publicly, because now it's more of a sales plan here, is what I see, instead of a good communication between the council and your administration. And that's all I was stating on that.
Councillor, just curious, under what type of format would have you wanted this communicated to the council, if it's not the public?
Like I said, most of the time, this time of year, we're already starting to discuss the options that we can utilize with the extra money. And that didn't happen this year. We were just given this. That's, that's all.
As one option, yes, sir.
And with this big of a change, with this much of a change, and they've already identified the monies that they're going to need, I just thought that that should have been something that should have been identified to the council before now.
Fair enough. Councillor Jamison.
I suppose if I could, Mayor, thank you for your presentation, and I think you're doing a fine job with your team, Don Kearney, your staff. The due diligence work, I mean, I think you're doing it right. You know, you and I, Mayor, and others, were involved in a pretty heavy race in April. One thing I learned in that race was that, much to my demise, I suppose, was people wanted this indoor pool. And the details of the size of the pool, the shape, the water flow, the slide in or outdoors, even the cost, though, some of those details wasn't important. It was getting the job done, getting it built. And I learned that probably the hard way, I would say. But, the only issue that I would have in this whole discussion is, the additional, I believe it's $3.4 million that's needed. So the gift from the Bradfields is great, God bless them, but the 3.4 million, it's only our job here in the council to make sure that we authorize that money at the time, after assessing all the needs of the city. And there, and one thing I did learn for sure is that this indoor pool is not the most important thing to the public. Streets are. And so, I just want to make sure we balance this out when we do authorize this funding in one way or another. Because I'm pretty assured that the public wants it to get built and funded. Just how we fund it is really the minor details that we have to work out. And so, I just want to make sure that we get a list, maybe from Public Works and other departments, about, I guess the 6.6 million is going to come from Parks, and I get that argument, that makes sense. Because amongst the Parks Department, I would bet this is the number one project. It needs to get done, I get that. But with the rest of the community, we have to consider those other options. So if we have to borrow, you know, several million to finish this out, because we identify other projects that just have to get done, we need to consider that before we just vote on this individually. So please, if you could, administration, follow through with us with a list of the items that are getting done, that maybe Public Works has identified as transportation, roads that need to get done. Somehow help us through this process, so that we don't maybe have to struggle with, you know, funding this pool right now, without those other considerations. So, but otherwise, good job.
Councillor Urbanbach? All righty, I've got a couple of things here. I have questions on, or maybe comments that were made. In regard to size, are we increasing the footprint of the building? I know we talked about the interior space and bigger pools, but are we increasing the size of this building?
You know, the size, the footprint of the building is very close to what was originally laid out in the Aquatic Facility Master Plan. I think the difference is, is that just some of the types of spaces have shifted around, but as a general rule, it's very close to what was originally in the Aquatic Facility Master Plan.
Parking and everything included.
Parking is still going to be, as part of our design review process, Mike Cooper sits in on that process for us, has identified what's required by building code, and so we're going to meet all those codes as part of this project.
Another question, more finance related, so for Tracy Turbach, if you know the answer to this. It was just about two years ago that we were given the original presentation, and that included the $19.8 million. And it's going to be another year and a half till this is done. What kind of factor are we using for inflation over that period of time? Do we have a number that we're using?
Looking forward or looking backward? I'm not sure.
Well, maybe both, if you've got them.
Well, we, of course, the inflation going backward is really looking at what the, our consultants are telling us it's going to cost today to build, and that's, once we lock in those prices and begin to bid out packages, then those costs are locked in. It's their job, really, to determine whether or not they can fulfill their obligation for the contract that's been bid. So, looking forward, I guess, unless there's a delay in those escalation costs in construction, are not really a concern for the city, as long as we don't delay the project. And looking back, I think, because that was one of the four major bullet points that I mentioned in terms of the, kind of the reason behind the additional investment, we had talked about somewhere around a million dollars of that increase had been related to inflation, construction cost escalation.
From now till completion?
Well, from looking back to when we, when the project was first provided a cost estimate.
So, a million looking back, and probably close to a million looking forward.
It would be, yeah, I mean, it's, it's very significant. We're told that, that in general, construction costs are escalating at double-digit rates, so I mean, it's, it's not, those dollars add up very, very quickly on a project of this size.
Okay. The other thing I'm, and I'm fairly reluctant to bring this up, but a couple of years ago, as part of our budgeting process, we took a million and a half dollars out of our pool budget, and we put it to a county project that we're still waiting to get built. And I know, no offense, Councillor Urbanbach, I know that's a project that you've been very supportive of, and I voted for that myself, but we did remove a million and a half dollars from this pool budget some time ago. Councillor?
If I, if I might, just, and it is, it's a project that I've been very active with, and that the city's been active with over the years, in trying to build that archive center that would help to preserve the Courthouse Museum, which is such a landmark in our community. That, you're right, though, that, that we're, it's a three-way split. We put $1.3 million in, the county's supposed to put in $1.3 million, and then we have $1.3 million from the sale of the land, part of the land that was given for that project. I would not disagree with you that we're at a point where something needs to happen with that project, that, that our money can only sit there so long. There, you know, law allows us to keep it, let it roll over a couple of, a couple or three years in a row, but there has to be a point where we be realistic about this. And I guess, you know, I would say, I'll say this publicly, this is what's been floating around in my mind, by the first of June, when we start talking about 2016 budget, we better know what's happening with that money. And if it's not, then let's talk, you know?
And my point to bringing that up, this up, is, like I said, two years ago, we talked about 19-point-whatever million. We're adding $2 million in time, and we've kind of pilfered our budget for the pool. We robbed from that piggy bank already. We've taken over $3 million out of this project just by time and by, by doing these things. So, when we look at it, I don't think we should be surprised by that increased cost.
I think that's good.
Other comments, questions? Councillor Anderson?
One question. Tracy talked about when this gets bid out, then we'll pretty much have a, when is this going to be bid out? I see construction, pool construction in the spring, but when are we going, when are we planning on bidding this out? I don't know who may answer that.
In general terms, to say, but Tony Weisman from Sioux Falls Construction, if you have more detailed questions. There's three bid packages for this project, and the first bid package will be scheduled, I believe, Tony, in March for the foundations. But, so it's very similar to, it's a construction manager at risk job, so as we progress through the design, it's very prudent to get ahead of bid packages as they get done with design. So, he'll be moving forward, Sioux Falls Construction will be moving forward with foundation bids, even though we're not quite yet done with the design, because there's enough design work done for a foundation bids to start letting out. So, but there are three bid packages, and the first one is in March. If you want further information, I can bring Tony up.
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Other questions from the council, comments? All righty, first in, I'm sure, a long series of discussions we're going to have on the pool, so thank everybody for their time.